Welcome back, everybody, to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. We have no public forum. Item two, apologies, we've got apologies from councillor Wiley and councillor Staines. I'll move that the apologies be accepted, seconded councillor Walker. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Confirmation of the agenda, I'll move that council confirm the agenda with the following additional alteration with regard to standing order 21.4, option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments. Seconded councillor Walker, thank you. All those in favour? Sorry, any discussion? All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Declarations of interests. I'll move that council notes the elected members' interest register confirms the attendant proposed management plan and notes the staff members' interest register. Seconded councillor Gary, thank you. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Part B reports? Reports. Item five, the 2021/21 rating method. Mr Logie, Ms Graham, any comments?
We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. No questions? Councillor Lord?
Just in terms of the rating method, the CRST tax, whatever they call it, the... So I just need to get... CSTR, yep. A few years ago, I came to council and there was quite a concern about how high rates had got for different people. And I was told that at that time the CSTR was designed to even out the playing field and that one of the problems that could fix the problem was by increasing that with inflation every year. And this suggestion, there's a number of options which include reducing or even removing that completely, that would seem to fly in the face of the advice that I was given back in 2010. It was even before I was a councillor. I'm just wondering if there's any views on that.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, we weren't there, so we weren't privy to the advice that was given. Unless it was somebody that was. At the end of the day, the purpose of this report is to respond to a thing that came out of the annual plan a couple of weeks ago, where we wanted to look at options of how we could change the apportionment of the rates across the city as a result of the change that came about through the latest revaluation. So, as you can see in the tables that were provided here, shows that that, by doing what we've proposed here, does have that effect.
In the report, it did say historically property revaluations have not had a significant impact on how rates are distributed between properties. Do you stand by that as a historical thing as well? Is this an unheard of situation? That, for example, rates have gone up? Or you just can't... I mean, that, to me, I don't agree with that statement. I don't think that's correct. And I just think it's reflected a different way this particular time. So, in what context do you make in that in the report? Item six.
So when we presented the rating report, we talked about the relative shifts in the valuations. And I think everybody around the room would acknowledge that there has been a change in the market, particularly in the residential market. So there's been a significant movement in the last revaluation compared to the previous. And that has been probably to a degree disproportionate to the other movements in the valuations for the other property types.
Councillor Benson-Pope?
Thank you. Just in terms of the decisions we make from year to year, I'm wondering if Mr Logie or Ms Graham could confirm that it's not uncommon for us to adjust rating decisions or differentials or delay or perhaps never accelerate introduction of change. And I'm referring to the repeated delay in the introduction of the shift, increase, shift in the rates on farmland. For a number of years were delayed because of concerns about an unreasonable impost on that sector, that able to be confirmed by staff?
The only thing I can confirm is I understand that the differentials were changed and it was agreed by council of the day that that would be phased over a period of time to minimise the impact on individual rate payers.
And that that phasing was further phased to make it over a longer period?
Can't comment, I don't think I was there, but I know that was phased.
That's fine, thank you. I'm happy to move, Mr Chairman, that we support the middle of the three changes, which is to B, the reduction of the CSTR to $100.
That's fine. Are there other questions? I just thought it...
Oh, sorry.
Councillor, where are we? Councillor O'Malley?
I'm looking at the table on page 22. And we get to, you know, depending on the different options, you get different rates increases. Is that in addition to the proposed rates increase that we're going to put? Or does it include it? I'm not...
Sorry, it does include it.
It does include it, okay. Thank you very much. And just to sort of clarify, from councillor Lord's questions, have we seen that some residential properties, especially at the lower end of valuation, have seen a greater proportional rise in value compared to the other, compared to the top end? And also against commercial? So therefore proportionally, the lower value properties have actually gone up in their relative value to the rest of the city? And that's why their rates are going up higher if we don't adjust?
So that's correct. If you look at the table, in option one, it just shows you the relative movement in some of those properties, and it's quite significant. So the CV increase for the mode, which is the most common, is 57%, whereas the commercial is 22.8%.
And therefore, if we don't do any adjustment and go to the status quo, that last column will be effectively the rates effect on those recipient properties?
Yes, bearing in mind that each of these valuations is just a particular valuation. So that doesn't mean that every property at 245 went up by the same amount. But yes, but it's on that.
Councillor Vandevos?
Thank you. Mr Logie, do you accept that it's the lower value property owners that have had the biggest gains from the most, these recent increases in property valuations?
So, with respect, councillor, I can't comment on individual circumstances of our rate payers.
I'm not asking for an individual. I'm saying that in general, these lower value properties are the ones that have had the biggest percentage gains in value across the board.
That seems to be the indication, yes.
Right. Do you accept also that the people that own properties are generally winning because of capital gains? And the people that rent properties are generally not able to access those capital gains? So that it's actually renters that are the most disadvantaged by this increase in property values?
I don't know if it's a fair question of the staff to ask who is or isn't relatively disadvantaged.
That's the whole premise of this rating method option proposal.
The report is a response by staff to a request of council to decrease the proportion of the rates take, or increase the proportion of the rates take through general rates. The implications of that as to who is or isn't disadvantaged as a result of that would be a political decision.
And this is entirely politically driven, which is why I asked the question. But if I'm not having an answer, it's okay. I can simply take it as fairly obvious. I would like to foreshadow that in the event that option B of $100 isn't to be agreed, I'd like to foreshadow option one, the status quo, which increases the CSTR by 650.
That's great, thank you. Councillor Hall?
In your assessment of the valuations, did the valuations go up on the improvements or mainly the land?
Again, I'm not a valuer, but I understand. I know personally, my valuation went up based on the land, and it does seem to be the land that has increased the value. But the land and the improvements is part of the total capital value, and that is the metric by which this council has agreed to apportion the rates under the current rating method.
Yeah, I accept that, but what I'm more getting at is if these people are in lower valued properties, the houses will be old, but they're making...
Is this a question for staff, councillor?
Yeah, I'd ask the question, but this is part of it. The question I asked is, these bigger increases, would you say have come from the land value? So therefore, if the properties went up by 10%, the biggest part of it was land value. So therefore, the rate payer with the lower value, getting a higher increase, has got a bigger increase across the land value side of it. Because some of the stuff I've looked at, the land value has gone up 90%, where the higher value properties, I wouldn't say none of their land values have gone up 90%. It's just in the lower bracket that's taken the big jump.
Further questions? Sorry, councillor Houlihan?
Have we done any research or got any information to show what sort of impact an increase in rates could make for businesses if we increase commercial rates?
Again, as your worship has indicated, all we're doing is responding to a request from council to look at how we could, a methodology by which we could move more of the rate take into the general category. This seems to be the simplest way to do that, if that's what council wishes to do. But it is a council decision.
But if we, you know, vote today to agree to this motion, that will have implications for people and their businesses, won't it? For the amount that they'll pay each week and their, you know, for their costs. It will increase their costs.
Whatever option you vote on today will be included in the annual plan draft budgets that then go to the community for consultation.
Right, but if we approve it and it moves forward, and it's an option, you know, I think every, if I'm incorrect, every one of these options bar the one of just staying the same, I think of option one, every other one has an increase for commercial, is that correct?
All options increase rates because, as we did the annual plan, one of the things that was in the annual plan was the fact that all rates would go up by 6.5, all the income would go up by 6.5%. So therefore, implication, everything staying even, then everybody's rates would go up.
Oh, but I'm meaning over the 6.5.
I just would like, if you have a look through 2B, what you see is that option 2B, the increase from the residential, residential and commercial is about the same. So that means that the increase is borne similarly across the categories of residential and there's a decrease in farmland. Lifestyle business and the two categories of residential end up having about the same amount of average increase. So it does, apart from the decrease in farmland, it does, it is, it's, it does sort of hit even-handedly across residential and businesses.
But do they go up more than, you know, is there more of an increase in percentage? Obviously, it's overall 6.5, but does that increase for commercial in 2B as well?
Well, I mean, the numbers that don't have a minus in front of them are increases, and the numbers that have minuses in front of them are decreases.
So what you see is with option 2B, which is the one that's being flagged, you have an 8.3% increase and a 9.2% increase on the median and an 8.8% increase on the businesses. So pretty aligned. If you opt for the status quo, then residential, 10.1, 11.6, but only a 4.4% increase for business. So actually residential ends up picking up a bigger share of the increase than commercial. It's not even. I don't know whether even motivates you, but that's kind of the way it falls. Under option 2B, it falls more evenly across both businesses and the median mode of residential.
I would, is there any way we can tell, you know, if we agree on this, that, because our aim, I believe, by doing this is to, if I'm asking, is this correct? Is to make it a bit easier for low socio-economic who...
Councillor, it's not a question for staff to answer what the aim of this is. The aim of this report is responding to a resolution of council. We ask ourselves what we are trying to achieve. This council asked for a report from staff outlining options to increase the proportion of rates collected by way of the general rate. This is a series of options that staff have worked up that give effect to that. Why you would choose or why you wouldn't choose any, a number of these is a political decision for this body to make.
However, in terms of the impact of the change, option 2A more so, option 2B slightly less, and option 2A slightly less again, have the impact of reducing the increase on lower household values and increasing the increase on upper values, on average. So it equivalises, it means that people who own lower value houses aren't picking up a bigger share of the increase. It makes the increase pretty even across house values on average, and house and business values on average.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Lord?
Yeah, I guess my question is, I'm not going to question Gavin, but it's probably for the chief, but it's maybe also of yourself, your honour, and the question would be, do we...
Not a judge yet.
Yeah, your honour, same thing, yeah, your worship. The question is, do we know, do we have any data about which houses in the market? So I recognise from the report that the houses that have, and it came from, I can't remember, it was councillor Vandevos or councillor Hall's statement earlier, but we recognise that the lower houses have taken the biggest jump. Now, do we know if that's also reflected in the rental market? Are they the houses that are more likely to be owned as renters? I would imagine, for example, that less million-dollar homes are owned and rented out compared with $200,000 houses that have now become $500,000 houses, or that 300 to 500. So my question is, do I feel comfortable with this motion in the view of, do we have any information that would support that premise?
Is the question around the relative owner-occupier rates of different quartiles of property values?
Well, perhaps if I ask it, if I make a wee question why I'm asking. So what I would say is, I know a lot of people that would own houses that they've picked up in the last few years just purely for rentals, okay? So they bought houses for 275, 280, 300, 325, that have now had a huge capital gain. Now, the question is, what we're trying to actually, what I think we will end up doing is we will reward these people by giving them a break when they're actually in it purely for commercial reasons. So the question is, are you rewarding the right people with this motion?
That's...
And I can...
That's not a question, well, it's a question for yourself.
Well, the question is, do we have any information on which houses currently are rented? Is it tending to be that? So even with all the premier task force on housing, we've never looked to see which homes are rented. So you can't advise or tell me that...
No, no, we can't. However, I would point out that most people who rent houses want to make a return. And they won't realise their capital gain until they sell. And then if they want to buy again, they have to buy in that same market. So that's interesting. I think one of the key things to remember is many landlords are likely to pass on a significant rate increase to their tenant. So if you disproportionately load, not all, but I'm saying many, if you disproportionately load a larger rate increase at the lower end of the market, I think what you will find is that disproportionately, houses at the lower end of the market will have larger rent increases in order to make good that most landlords don't want to be running at a loss. They can do it for a period of time, but there's a period of time where that isn't sustainable, obviously.
But they've also had the largest capital gains.
When they sell, but not until they sell. That's right, but they have when they sell.
Further questions? It's been option 2B.
2B and also the approval of the rating method, which is the second part of the motion.
That's fine, is there a seconder? Seconded councillor O'Malley, to speak to the motion.
I'd like to, I'd just like to say that I was entirely supportive, your worship, of the initiative to modify, massage, slightly adjust this rate, or some rate, this one we chose, because I've always been a strong opponent of the regressive effect of set charges, targeted rates of whatever kind. We know that irrespective of the ownership nature of properties, it's people on the lower end of the value scale who are most seriously affected by targeted rates of all kinds. It's a pernicious regressive tax or rating system. I've always opposed it. However, over the years, various levels of uniform charge have been introduced to flatten the system so that those who happen to own, for whatever reason, more valuable property are also being reasonably considered and not paying an unreasonably high share at the other end. And so much and all is, I've done like the mechanism, it's a bit like democracy. It's as good a system as we get, and I'm not advocating a change to a poll tax, which has been tried elsewhere and is much worse than the mixed sort of rating system we've operated in this country. As you've heard me say before, and as I've illustrated again earlier in respect of the council's previous decisions to modify its earlier decisions to accommodate various sectors, there's nothing unusual about this. And I think you'll agree with me, I hope, that when you look at the paper that staff have, I think very competently and thoroughly explained and prepared over quite a short period, that there's nothing simple about the rating system and there's nothing simple about the effects of a little tweak here and there. It is always extremely difficult. And just like I was buckled to the compromise of a few targeted rates and a capital value collection system, I've also long believed that a moderate position in trying to achieve the goal that council set staff to do last week is the most sensible way to go. And I think that the 2B, the Hamlet option, is the sensible choice that's been offered to us. I think it has the effect of moderating the rates increases for those in lower value property. It doesn't matter if they're owners or renters, as the chief executive illustrated, the end result is the same. The rates go up and/or the rents go up. So I think this is a sensible and appropriate response to a massive change in valuation, a valuation shock, if you like, for a lot of residents-owners in our city. And I think it's entirely appropriate. In respect of the comment that councillor Lord made in his question, I'm delighted that he's become a supporter of a capital gains tax, because when we have that, that will correct that anomaly. That is also one of the factors that's driving the housing shortage in this country. But more of that in my right of reply. Thank you.
As long as you have something to respond to along those lines. Councillor Houlihan?
Right, well, God help us. I, so I'm all for helping people who are not doing well and, you know, socially, economically deprived. And no one wants to see an increase, I don't want to see any rate increases. My concern is that everyday people are struggling. And my other concern with this is that if we have an option that lowers the rate for people who own houses that are perhaps a bit lower, it means, if I've understood this correctly, that people have houses that are just an average home as well, are going to have an increase. And I'm also concerned about the increases there could be with this and the implications on business. And I do think that a lot of businesses are on the edge already, and this could push them over. And I've heard examples of rate increases that, you know, that rates have gone from 20,000 to 50,000. I mean, that sounds very extreme, but that's what I've heard. And I just have concerns that, you know, if we get to quite large increases, businesses could fall. I'm also concerned that everyday people have trouble actually paying their rates now. So any extra increase is going to hit the pocket of everyone. And one might say that people who actually own a house are more well-to-do than, you know, it's the ones who haven't got a house at all who are the ones we need to be helping with other initiatives. But yeah, that's my concerns around this. And I do hope, obviously, I don't want any increase, but we have to run our city.
Councillor Hall?
My concern on this is, commercial and the farmland side of it, is back in the 80s and 90s, we had not so much a rate increase, but rental, ground rent increases when Chalmers Property, the city, owned a lot of the land in here. And we lost a lot of our commercial stuff, they just left town because you haven't got too dear. We're in the same situation with this. I can give you evidence of ground rent increasing by 75% in the last month. And this is going to be across the board, and this is going to end up losing a lot of our commercial businesses around the city. And if we lose them, we will be losing jobs, we'll be losing everything. And with this rate increase, we've got the rural sector, SARS virus is hitting them dramatically right now. We've got beef prices that have dropped by $2, $2.50, coronavirus, yeah. They've dropped by $2.50 per kg. Lamb prices, we are not going to be able to sell lambs in the next three months. Dairy prices are going to bottom out at the present time. Well, six weeks ago, they were talking $2.75 a kg for milk solids. I can see it being down to six or even five, because China's pulled out of the market. So we've got to look at how we're going to hit all of our commercial stuff and our farmland, and it's going to hit them dramatically. So do we need to lose jobs in the city? Because that's what I can see happening. If ground rentals increase the way they are, I've got proof of one now, as I said, 75, and it's one of the first, and it's just going to snowball, because everybody follows suit in the ground rental. So I won't be in support of this.
Councillor Walker?
Yep, I'll try and be succinct and actually stick to the point. I support the motion and just want to reiterate the fact that targeted rates do disproportionately impinge on the least able to pay. So I support any methodology, albeit small, that helps that demographic.
Councillor Gary?
Thank you, your worship. I was not here for the discussion during the annual plan discussion, but I commend colleagues on requesting this report and considering the impact of the recent valuations on lower value property. I would like to have seen option 2C, but I think it's a good compromise to go for 2B, and I'll certainly be supporting this motion.
Councillor Vandevos?
We have a fundamental inequity issue here, and we have a lot of statements that have just been made, which I believe to be untrue. We have a great deal of political posturing regarding those who claim that people, that they are looking after people on the lower end of the scale and that rates increases will impact on those least able to pay. This from people who in the last two weeks have all voted to give staff 7.4% increase in staff costs on top of the 8% that they agreed to staff costs last year. You can't yourself make a rates increase well in excess, three times the rates of inflation, without impacting on those least able to pay. And all of those claiming with political posture... And all of those claiming with political posturing to be looking after those least able to pay have actually voted for these massive cost increases in the first place. The problem now is, how do we assuage the ranker of those trying to get to pay a smaller slice of the pie? The fundamental inequities that we have are what cause the complexity in our rating system. Councillor Benson-Pope has claimed that there's nothing simple about the rating system. If you go to Invacagal, they have a very simple rating system. The residents play exactly what commercial pay, they have a differential of one, and it's as simple and fair and equal as you can get. People pay for the service they receive, and they pay similarly. There is a Robin Hood aspect built into it, and that they can pay a percentage of their property value, so richer people pay more, and that's always been the case. And we accept that richer people can pay more, and therefore we make sure they do, mainly because there's less of them and they don't get to vote anymore. But the inequities that this particular motion continues to increase are disguised in the tables that we've been presented with. We are presented with percentage increases on top of what are already vastly dis, I mean unequal, rating differentials. Our rating differential of 2.45 for commercial, almost two and a half times the rate that residential people pay.
Point of order, councillor Benson-Pope.
The councillor is repeatedly talking about the differentials. We know that council has a motion on the box to examine that issue, but that is not relevant to this motion. This motion is specifically about a change to the, to one of the targeted rates and an approval of what's planned. So on the basis of irrelevance, I'd ask you to rule that the matter of whatever the differentials might be is an argument for another day.
And I won't hold a point of order, because I think it's difficult to argue that the wider context of the rating method is irrelevant to the discussion at hand. And I would ask the councillor to focus more on the motion that is being debated, but I don't think it's irrelevant.
I note, having been again interrupted mid-stride on a item and on a report that is called "rating method", and it is only rating method that I've been referring to. So thank you for, hopefully, the last. Thank you. So the differential issues that we have here, uniquely in the South Island, and extremely in the South Island, are the cause of the fundamental problems that we have in trying to be equitable about rating changes resulting from value changes. When we had a rating workshop on the rating method only a few weeks ago, I asked the question, does our commercial 2.45 differential, how does that relate to other cities? I was told that it is roughly the same as other cities. I asked at that meeting if the rating differentials of Invacagal and Christchurch, our near competitors, could be sent to us. I was told they would be, and they weren't. At the next meeting where rating was possible to be discussed, the rating method, it was finally revealed, belatedly, that the rating differential for commercial in both, in Invacagal, was one, which means no differential at all, and in Christchurch, only 1.66, which means the advice that we were given here as councillors on our rating method was misleading. We have a situation now where, over many years, we have been targeting commercial rate payers with an excessive differential, causing them to be uncompetitive in what is an increasingly national and international business market. The New Zealand average economic indicators for Dunedin show that we have lower unemployment, we have lower disposable income, we have lower vehicle registrations, we have lower productivity, we have an exit of businesses that councillor Hall has referred to. And the reason we have exits of businesses from Dunedin, and fewer businesses coming to Dunedin compared to, say, Christchurch or Invacagal, is because we make it uncompetitive for them to be here because of the differentials that we are currently playing with. The percentage differentials proposed in councillor Benson-Pope's motion are simply percentage changes on top of an already grossly unequal differential system, which does not recognise the value of the services supplied, but simply tries to increase the Robin Hood rate system that we have and hit commercial harder. And never mind the fact that the long-term effect of that will be that there will be less jobs, more businesses leaving Dunedin. And then the claim that these, that this change in rates is going to help those least able to pay, again, those that are least able to pay are the renters. They are not the owners of low-value properties. The biggest winners in the valuation changes have been the owners of low-value properties, and Mr Logie has confirmed that here today. So in order to maintain a system which is already very heavily loaded against the wealthier in our community, we should be voting for the status quo here and not for any change in the CSTR. Thank you for hearing me out.
Councillor Reddick.
Thank you. Dunedin has come from a long period of commercial stagnation, in which we had a loss of jobs, and a lot of people departed Dunedin for Australia. A lot of businesses closed down, and we had no growth. Now we have come into a period of growth, largely due to the cheaper housing here and the very great rise in the cost of housing in the North Island, Auckland in particular. But we're now here looking to make housing a little bit cheaper for people and make life more difficult, like on the crest of this wave of commercial improvement in town, we're looking to make life much more difficult for businesses. And when I look at the difference between option one and option two B, for instance, the average, residential average price, the rate increase, is if it's only $44 the difference by going from option one to option two B. So it saves householders $44. But it increases, it penalises, commercial property owners $729, is a double the rate increase for them. So it's a significant disincentive for commercial property owners for a relatively small saving for homeowners. So we're making, we're in danger of making a token gesture for householders in the order of $44 per year. They're still faced with a six-and-a-half, you know, very substantial rate increase, which is of necessity, arguably. But commercial building owners are getting, this is changing the weighting quite dramatically to the commercial owners, because in the opinion of, you know, many present, they can afford it. Yet that flies in the face of the evidence we've seen of many businesses shutting up shop and moving to other places and finding the commercial environment in Dunedin too difficult. And so we're in danger of shooting ourselves in the foot here, because we need to have businesses in town to have jobs that hold the population here. So consequently, I, you know, I don't think this is the right thing to do.
Councillor Lord.
Yeah, look, I sit here and I declare I'm no longer a farmer, so this is no skin in the game for me personally, but I look at what this is going to do with the rates for farmers. I look at the increase for commercial, and I think at option one, they would be having a rates increase of 1.9%. Under this proposal, their rates increased to 8%. I think on top of what far, sorry, what commercial people are already paying at 2.5 times, or 2.45 times the differential, it did used to be 3.2. I agree with councillor Benson-Pope, there have been reductions, and there were reductions in, that I remember from, I think the differential was 0.9, and it went to 0.85, or possibly 0.8. And that was increased, it was sped up. But I look at what rates have happened, and I've got a, where I live now, I pay very little targeted rates, I just pay, I get no services, that's why. But I look at my general rate, and I don't think as a household, it's particularly expensive. My rate's about, I think, $1,500, $1,600 a year. But when I look at what this does for commercial, and I know that people struggle commercially, and I think with farmland even, yes, if you stick with option one, they get a 9.6% decrease. But the reason they're getting that decrease is because in the last few years, farmland's taken exceptional increases where residential didn't. Now, I know farmers that are paying $3,000 and $4,000 a year just for the stadium. They pay hundreds of dollars just for public toilets, things they never use. They pay thousands of dollars for the library, they pay thousands of dollars for swimming pools. They're paying general rates of $40,000, $50,000, $60,000. And they basically just live in a house just like everyone else here. They are paying majorly amounts of money, and it's exactly the same for the commercial. You go and look at what the OTT would pay for their rates relative to their services. And I'm not, I'm not saying that we need a poll tax, I realise that's a fairly blunt instrument, but one of my things I do is I'm the chair of the Rural Support Trust. And just this last week, I've spent three days looking after people that have been impinged by floods. But on another note, I deal with people that, you know, commit suicide. In my role, in that role that I've been doing for less than two years as chair, we've had 11 farm suicides. People that are absolutely struggling because they can't make money, and they can't make money for a variety of reasons, and pressure comes on for a variety of things, and it's not just rates, I fully acknowledge that. But I can't accept this now to just suddenly make our businesses less competitive and also our farms less competitive just because the whim of a rating thing. The reason my farmland hasn't, has got a reduction is because it hasn't gone up. Quite simply, it hasn't gone up because people aren't making money.
Councillor O'Malley.
Got a few points to start with here. I think I'd start with the general concept of how we rate in the first place. The value of a property is not necessarily a direct indicator of our income, but is a generally crude indicator of our income, so therefore we set that around that point. But it doesn't necessarily reflect whether the person is or is not of high income. And that's brought about the statements that, I almost think a little bit Freudian, people who have got enough money to do investment, that, oh, some of these properties have been bought by investors and they'll be able to afford it. However, also, these low-value properties will also be largely occupied by people who have had long-term low incomes, have been long-term owners with low income, and they will be also occupied by new owners, people who are trying to enter the property market. Both of those, and both of those groups will have trouble meeting extra demand upon them. When you look at how the rates have changed, it's due to a non-standardised changing in the relative value of each other's, of each property set. So residential's gone up much more than commercial and rural, and therefore, as a consequence, if you stay with option one, the rural relative lack of rise is causing an actual 9% reduction in the rates contribution for that group. And who's going to get hardest? 14%. We're talking about, oh, you, and I listen, I'm in business as well, but to turn around and say this is all about smacking businesses over the head is ignoring the fact that if we don't do this redistribution, and I acknowledge it really is only around about $140, $150, we hit the least able to pay the hardest. This is a fixed amount of money we're bringing in. We're talking about how do we distribute the burden upon our community? I hear councillor Hall's statement about ground rentals going up, but if that's the case, if ground rentals are going up 50 to 75%, and yet the commercial rates going up, well, if we go for option two B, 8%, we're saying that rentals and other components are going up four to five times higher than what the city is putting upon them. So it would not be appropriate, in my opinion, to say that we are the entity that is putting the greatest amount of burden on these people. And in fact, you could argue that the free market is putting the greatest amount of burden on them, that speculation on property values is putting the greatest amount of burden on them. So if we recognise that farmland not going up as much as everything else is actually what's causing the redistribution, if we could get the redistribution identically, we'd have 6.5%, seeing that last column. So when you look at each of these options, which of these options brings most of the rate payers near the 6.5% mark? And it's option two B. I'm happy to see the farmers not pay their burden. I actually agree with a lot of what councillor Lord says. It seems, and that's why we also don't have a one ratio for farm value, right? Because it is a lot to ask out of a business, the amount of money you're getting for the services you get. But if we do any of those redistributions, if we go to where councillor Vandevos says part B, we're looking at the current rating method, any of those other distributions will come straight back onto the residential. So we've got to remember that when we talk about the burdens we're putting on commercial and rural. If we take them off them, we put them right back on residential. So trying to be as fair and equitable as we can, knowing we have a flat tax in the CSTR, we just move that flat tax down a little bit, put it back in the differential taxation, and with option two B, we come as close as we can to hitting that mark across all of the groups, which I think makes that the most equitable method of treating all the rate payers. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Wissel.
Thank you to the staff for doing as we asked, and I'd just like to thank the mover and the seconder for making, focusing us at this late day, late stage in the day. And I, you know, I understand what colleagues have said in opposing the motion, but for me, and, you know, I'm totally left field, out of left field, when it comes to equities, you know, for me and rating, you just have to look at the fact that Maori land is rated totally differently, and churches haven't paid rates forever. Thank you.
Further comment? I can, I can support this. I'd like to add my voice of thanks to the work staff have done fairly quickly in response to a request of council at the annual plan to give us options. I'm sure there are endless permutations of how you can answer the question that we put to staff, and thank you for presenting a spectrum like this. And my intention of moving it at the annual plan is the same as my reasons for voting for this, and that this is about mitigating the impacts of the recent revaluations that are disproportionately being felt by the owners of low-income residential properties. I also appreciate that this is a compromise, I too am philosophically opposed to flat taxes and would like to see it done away with altogether, but I appreciate that that is perhaps too radical a move for now. And I also, in response to councillor Lord's comments, would point to the more fulsome discussion that we will have through the long-term plan around the differential method in general, and how those different, and what we are trying to achieve by the rating method, and what the relative impacts on those different categories will be over the following 10-year period. But in the meantime, this is a small step in the right direction to mitigate the current situation that we're facing with the recent property revaluations on route to a more robust and infinitely more mathematical conversation that we get to have when we review the finance strategy as part of the long-term plan process. Councillor Benson-Pope, your right of reply.
Thank you. I'd like to thank councillors, particularly councillor O'Malley, for the reference to the table on page 21. The most useful piece of information for me has been the table of total rates and come by property category, and I refer that in particular to councillor Hall, who, for some reason, has noticed, might not be as bigger to decrease in farmland as some other options provide, but still maintains minus 6.8, a 6.8% reduction in the percentage of the rates that come from that sector. I think the comment that was made earlier by councillor O'Malley, that this- that this is the compromise that gets us closest to an even spread across the sectors is quite clear in that table in particular. And I would caution people against looking at the, the more finer grained reporting because the variety, once you start looking at individual rating demands and individual changes, property by property, is not as instructive as, as the wider picture. It might be interesting, and I can recall in discussions like this, and we may well have them in the future, where in amongst the random spread of rating accounts that was presented for consideration, every councillor's home was included, um, which is instructive in itself. Good luck, I hope we'll do it again, chaps. Um, but, but Demetri, and so I, I think the, uh, the, um, issues have been canvassed. Um, and I'd urge you to support a small step, as the mayor accurately says, to assist those who have less ability to pay, however you cut that issue. I'd also point out that this is for consultation. And so there will be no shortage of people, uh, who have their say, just as they'll have their say on the other matters that we'll be discussing later in the meeting, the S T V A stuff. Um, but the suggestion that we're somehow attacking the poor commercial sector is nonsense. In fact, many parts of the commercial sector are about to be the beneficiaries of sixty million dollars plus of rating money well and truly agreed to enhance their physical environment. So no one should have any doubt or even an integrity suggest that this ca, this council hasn't got the welfare and the future of the whole wider city at heart. And that's with a heart at the core of this sort of decision. Thank you.
Thanks to have the vote taken by division, please.
Councillor Benson Pope.
Aye.
Councillor Barker.
Aye.
Councillor Alder.
Aye.
Councillor Gary.
Aye.
Councillor Hall. Councillor Houlihan.
Aye.
Councillor Lefiso.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Councillor O'Malley.
Aye.
Councillor Reddick.
No.
Councillor Stan, oh, sorry. Councillor Vandevus.
No.
Councillor Walker.
Aye.
Your worship.
Aye.
Carried eight, five.
Thank you. Item six, short term visitor accommodation, if we're dealing with the same folk, no, Mr Toomes. Mr Logie's looking comfortable. It's fine, it was the personnel I was interested in, welcome. Uh, any comments you wish to make at this point or go to questions? Questions, councillors? An absence of questions, would someone, councillor Alder?
Um, I note that, um, we're saying something about over twenty-eight days. And, um, I'm just wondering how we monitor that kind of thing.
So the premise of, of the, um, putting the short term visitor accommodation differential in place would be based on self declaration?
Okay.
So that's the primary method by which we would get people to participate.
I also note that, um, if people own their own property and live in it and they have people visiting, that the constraints are not so, um, strict, separate.
So the primary focus of the, of the options that were put in place is purely around whole of residents. So what it doesn't preclude is somebody last night having people in their house while there was a concert on. Um, because obviously, a, as you get peak, peak demand for accommodation, sometimes that's useful to have that option available to people coming into the city.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I continue to have concerns, I, I understand this, this has a ways to go, but, uh, continue to have concerns about the definition, uh, in this because, um, while I understand, um, our focus is probably around properties that are bought specifically for short term visitor accommodation, what we're saying is non-owner occupied residential properties or separately used or inhabited part. And I can think of many different variations of that. Where there's a heck of a lot of confusion, uh, out in the community, I've already had phone calls and, um, whether they are going to fit into the category or not. And I can't answer the question because I don't know. Um, and no doubt that will become clear as we go through the process. But, uh, that is probably my one concern. I think it's, it's excellent that we're looking to, to look at it as part of a wider review. But I do think we have some work to do on that definition, um, because it isn't quite that clear cut. And I can think in my head of four examples just off the top of my head where I wouldn't know which category they'd fit into. I understand what the focus is, but I don't think this is going to be as easy as we perhaps anticipated. And I think that's clear in the report, I'm not surprised.
I am looking for the focus of the question.
The, the question. Have you thought about any further refinement? Thank you, your worship. Um, of that definition, particularly around the separate. So for example, if you've got somebody living on the property, but they have a separate short term visitor accommodation on their property.
So as you've noted councillor, this is not a, an exact science. And therefore, um, the more time we have, the more we can go and delve into the various options that are going to be out there in terms of what the community's doing.
Excellent, and I think the way we communicate, that's going to be really important. Thank you, thank you for your indulgence, your worship.
Thank you. Councillor Reddick.
Is, uh, my observation, people aren't prone to volunteering to pay extra money. So, um, so I'm curious as to, so a two-part question. Firstly, how is the, um, attraction method that Queenstown is using by putting up a website where, that has all the Airbnb and, you know, short term accommodation or home stays and that kind of thing? So that, um, that, uh, people's subscription to that or their, uh, covers, uh, attracts them to declare that they have accommodation, therefore they pay the extra rates? Uh, how's that working? And second, the second part of that is, do you have any other alternate methods other than declaration in the back of your mind that might induce people to, uh, pay the extra rates? Or thirdly, do we have any way of compelling or figuring out who it actually is?
Thank you councillor, um, I'll take question by question in there if I may. So, um, one of the questions was, is Queensland, Queenstown's method perfect? No. Um, we're aware of, a lot, a lot of councils are looking at this, but hesitant to jump in because of all the complexities and the, the imperfections of how it's going to work. Uh, we're aware of the two major councils that have moved forward to this. One relies on self declaration and they acknowledge that's not perfect. We're aware that the other one, um, puts advertising on their website and they recognise that's not perfect. So, um, no one's come up with a really perfect model yet.
So you haven't got any other further suggestions of how to do it?
We're not aware of any other models that are working well out there, no.
Yeah, and as a matter of interest, do you have any data on the Queenstown method and the voluntary method?
Data, we're having, uh, we've been in communication with them to, um, uh, early stages of communication, just to, again, learn from what they've been doing and share experiences. But, and they're saying the same thing, it's a, it's a model that's can be administratively heavy. Um, and for no bottom line benefit to council apart from a, a perceived increase in equity.
So I just to elaborate on that last time, for no, uh, so it's a method that is very imperfect with getting a result and the net result is generally no increase in the bottom line.
There'll be zero increase to our rating, our rate income. It's just how it's allocated between different, um.
Yep, so in other words, the whole thing's a waste of time.
Uh, no, no, I wouldn't say that. Um, certain people believe it's a very worthwhile exercise.
Why?
Why? Well, the, uh, I'm sorry, I thought the paper made that clear, the motel industry in particular, are very keen for, um, some sort of, um.
Yeah, to put some brakes on that.
S T V A rating, yeah.
And as is outlined on the first page of this report, council's view is supporting of a method, a supportive of a method like this, which is what we've asked staff to go and bring back to us, which is where we're at. Uh, councillor Barker.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I've had a bit of experience with this, having worked within council in the economic development unit when we were looking at one stage, I think at putting a five hundred dollar fee on the Airbnbs, um, which was not well received and didn't go through. I just wonder, we're looking at, um, I'm looking at page thirty-three, number thirteen, which says that the traditional accommodation providers and, um, residential S T A, V A providers benefit from council expenditure on marketing and economic development, blah, blah, blah. Um, we have a little bit in the commercial rates about a kind of targeted rate. I wonder, has that been explored as well? I know we don't like the word targeted rate, but I wonder whether that's an option. Um, I bring up the Jill Said subscription and I wonder whether there's targeted rates or subscriptions that have been locked out.
So we, we did consider targeted rates, but that was more about, um, the, the current tourism rate, I think, is only collecting half a million dollars a year. So you would have to expand that. If you expanded that to include this cat, this, this group of properties, it would still, the, the rate would still be spread across all the properties. So you're still going to pin, you know, so say we increase that to two million dollars, that two million dollars would include the existing people that pay it plus the Airbnb. So actually, you're not completely dealing with the equity issue, if you understand what I'm, yeah. That's the problem with the targeted rate, a targeted rate has to be about the service they're getting. So you can't just take these group of properties and say, they're getting the benefit of that spend. It has to be across everybody.
Thank you.
What you're saying is a challenge.
Yes, yeah, um, we've certainly heard a lot, uh, from the commercial sector about the uneven playing field and I was so concerned about the number of properties that have been taken, I guess, out of the, uh, the rental market, um, for use as Airbnb. So that is a, is a concern, what's my question? Sorry, I've completely lost it. Um. No.
We can, we can come back to it. Fine, councillor O'Malley.
Um, I just got a question, I want to follow up on councillor Gary's statement, or question eventually. Um, if we were, if we were in planning and we were looking for a consent of use on a property and someone wanted to subdivide their property and put a structure on the back for permanent use, would that require a, a consent to do, to operate in that way? If that was going to be, let's say, a permanent rental house? I don't think you've had the authority to acknowledge necessarily the answer, but I think the answer.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not an expert on, on resource consents, but certainly there are, there are, we've tried to highlight that there are consenting issues, there's building consent issues. Um, so there's a whole raft of things that could be implied out of this process that would, means that it does need a little bit more refining and understanding what those implications. So it's those unintended consequences that we would have to be very careful of. I mean, we talk about advertising properties for Airbnb on our website. Is that by default us condoning those activities? So that's one of the challenges that we would have to look at in terms of, are we then technically promoting them? And therefore, have we ensured that they are fit for purpose, for example?
Oh, my, my question was more along the, along the line basically saying that, are we in this particular model trying to identify standalone properties that are acting as a business as a standalone property, more or less?
That's the intention, is to try and deal, so councillors ask us to look at those properties primarily that are competing directly on a day to day basis with the commercial sector.
And therefore, if we had an unsubdivided property that was using a property on it and acting as an independent business, I would start to wa, ask the question in fact, is that property acting correctly anyway, under the consenting rules, planning rules? Um, the options that you have mentioned before, like you either subscribe or, or we hope you honestly turn up. Um, there is another option which I do believe you can subscribe to, which is there are companies that will, um, monitor the Airbnb sites and look for people who are advertising? Um, is that an option to us?
Legal advice, what we've heard and seen directly, isn't always consistent in some of these matters. So.
Basically, we, basically we have to rely on, so if you think about the valuation, if you take the valuation of a property, we have a process where we formally engage a group of valuers and it goes through an audit process. So that's a very robust process. If we are to create a category for this group, we have to have a process. We can't just randomly select them and say, that's, you're in. We have to rely on, on something empirical, which in the best thing is at this stage, is a declaration from them. Yeah.
Um.
But we could, but yeah, in answer to your question, could we go to the providers? Yes, it's certainly an option for us if, 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 if we wanted to proceed with this, this tactic.
So, because I guess I would get to this point then, if you, if the statement is that we could not enforce it, if everybody said no, then how do we deal with people saying no when we can clearly see that there are cars going in and out and there are ads on Airbnb? Is there a mechanism, will there be a mechanism for us to pursue a clear failure to self-report?
If we were to kick this off for first of July this financial year, I'd say there's a very, very slim chance compared to if we were to defer for another twelve months.
But if we kick it off now and then work our way through, would, would kicking it off now get in the way of doing that?
Uh, we just want to do it once and do it properly, as opposed to.
You know, we've deferred this once already, that's another question.
Yeah, yeah, um, and, yeah. If the model's going to prove problematic.
Okay, so, and I, I will, I promise this will be the last question. So under this mechanism, if a person fails to self-report and is demonstrated later, what recourse do we have and do we have an ability to find them? Will we have an ability?
Not that we're aware of, no.
Okay, so we.
Today it was relying on, would rely on them to self-declare.
So, okay, well, I'll save my observation there for debate.
Thank you. Councillor Houlihan.
Thank you. Do you have concerns about moving forward with this as it is now, because there's too many variables?
Probably the comment is that at the annual plan meetings, um, one of the things, one of the, um, motions that was put up was that the council wanted a full review of all differentials. This is effectively a, another differential. So the view is that if we're going to do a full review, then should we bundle this up as part of that process? Now, that's a decision for you as the elected members, but that would seem to be that we've got two motions sitting on the box and do they come together?
Have we got any data on, um, if, you know, because some people are saying that if there was a commercial rate charged on them, they'd get out of Airbnb. So what effect would that have on our, um, you know, housing situation in our city?
I'd be speculating, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Anecdotally, the stories I'm hearing are if S T V A providers were to be hit with a higher rate, they'd pass it on.
Right, okay, thank you.
Councillor Benson Pope. You can, you don't have any questions? We have, we have other questions, we'll get better, yeah, okay. Councillor Walker.
Yep, thank you, your worship. Um, like councillor Gary, um, I think that needs to be far more clarity, um, around this whole issue as I see many, many pitfalls in the paper presented. My question however is financially related. So assuming that we were to charge the one point seven five factor that's been indicated in the paper, and if you go back to twenty-seven, you've compiled two hundred and sixty-one residents. Um, the question is, is the income generated from that going to be, um, almost extinguished by the staff time related to, yeah.
So just following on from Mr Toomes' comment, what we do is, when we do the budget, we calculate how much income we need and then we just divide it by the number of properties. So putting in a differential for this group of properties does not change that total income we need, it just changes the apportionment of that. Will there be costs in collecting it? Um, yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be costs in trying to ascertain who is running an Airbnb and other start types of short term accommodation, that's not going to come free, no.
Councillor Lord.
Yeah, my question might be more for the chief, but I just, um, uh, two questions. So the first one is like, we were asked about this originally by commercial, um, the motley is mainly. Um, there's also been other people come in that have, uh, got access to grind with what their neighbours do and that sort of thing. But the, do the motels pay a commercial rate for their water and that sort of thing as well? Yeah, so they are, so they're rated according to volume. Now, now the next part of the question is, and, and I'm like councillor Gary, I do have just nervousness about how you would apply this and you might get someone.
Is it a question?
Yeah, it is, yep. Um, I, but, but it's, it's, I need to give you the background for the question. That I have a concern about how you would apply it and what I want to know is do, or would we get a, do we get any benefits as a city? For example, if I had a house that I rented out as an Airbnb and say I sold it sixty nights a year, so the other three hundred and five nights of the year, it's empty, it's not using water, it's not having cars running up. running up and down the footpath, like my own home could have had six cars, you know, running up and down the roads and that sort of thing. So, so do we get any advantage as a city, having houses that are empty for part of the time, but we're rating them at the same rate? So we're rating them for all the other services, all the other fixed charges they are paying, but they're not using. So, so there's people not going and wearing outbooks in the library, you know, is the benefits that way?
I would, look, this is opinion, but you'd have to consider whether that's well outweighed by the housing shortage, frankly.
Yeah, but our, our housing shortages, I totally agree. Councillor Barker made a good comment on that and it's correct. But is it actually our responsibility to be worrying about that? Is our driver for changing this, is this driver here because we're trying to produce more houses in rental? Is that, is that-
The driver for this report is the request of council to draft this report.
Yeah, I realise, I realise that, but I'm actually trying to work out is, do we gain anything as a council? What, what do we gain? That's my problem. I mean, if we are, if we got, well, the question I asked, which wasn't answered, but it was also too hard to answer and I appreciate that a bit, but, you know, these are people that are not using our rubbish services, they're not using our roads, except for whatever number of nights a year. I realise there's a huge difference between someone that's rented out every week versus occasionally, but they might argue they're already paying enough rates.
So there's a couple of things that get raised. One is the inequity for commercial providers versus this group of providers who are providing, you might argue, a commercial premise for accommodation. So there's an argument that there's inequity. There's also an argument from other people that having these houses used part-time when they could be being used by residents full-time, isn't a good position for your city. So they're the two arguments on the one side. You have to weigh those up for yourselves. We don't collect empirical information around that. They're political arguments, if you like.
And what we know is that at the moment, there could be over three, about 300 houses. So as a percentage of their 50,000, yeah. Yeah, I know, I was just trying to work out the number of-
So we, we've actually spent some money, councillor Walker, on, on going through the websites. And it's fundamentally a very hard exercise, because a lot, a lot of the times you go into Airbnb and unless I actually booked the room, we can't actually, there's no address. So, but there is about 300 that we can see. I think there was, there's about 90 that we, the, the address was unclear.
Out of about 48,000, 49,000 homes.
Forty-seven thousand homes.
Forty-seven thousand, thank you.
So remember, this is whole of house, not the individual rooms.
I'm more worried about how aggressively you're reading library books, councillor, to wear them out. Councillor Elder.
Just a question. We're not allowed to apply bed tax, are we? Is that a government decision? We have to go to central government to change that. It's just that in other countries and in other cities-
Is that a question, councillor?
Well, well, it is a question. Can we-
It's quarter to eight.
Can we do that?
No, no, we can't and the government's made it clear they're not going to allow it anywhere else.
Because Airbnb-
Is there another question?
Well, Airbnb in other countries-
Councillor, is there another question?
I suppose there isn't. Can we, can we submit to change that?
We can do, this body can do whatever it likes. Councillor Gary.
It's just that Airbnb in other countries do that.
The question has been asked and answered, councillor. Some of us have places to go. Councillor Gary.
Got two quick questions. The first is, are you aware that there is feedback that this situation with Airbnb has affected homestay, numbers of homestay availability as well as rentals?
Yeah, we can't comment on individual property use, but I suspect, I mean, all, all this disruptive type activity does have an impact on our community to varying degrees.
And secondly, and this might be a question for Mr. Pickford, I remember the last time we discussed this and there was items in the newspaper, there was a flurry of phone calls. Have we had much feedback? I know I certainly have.
Through the chair, yes, we did. We, there was publicity in the media and again, we had a lot of people contacting us, saying that we, they thought their neighbours were running an Airbnb, wanted us to follow up. So it does create an awful lot of work for the team to do that enforcement role. So, yeah, any publicity did generate more and more-
I guess I was more asking about those who are involved in this kind of activity and wondering and confused.
And, and yes, I mean, we did get a lot of inquiries through the CSA, wanting to know what the, what the rules were. And this is, this is the challenge for the whole area because it's each individual-
Sorry, can we have one person talking at a time, please?
Is, each Airbnb is individual. So it requires a visit and individual advice from our team.
councillor Houlihan.
Thank you. Is there a concern that we could be open to a legal challenge if we start charging, say, that 200 and odd people, when there's, what, 40,000 or whatever others who are actually doing, or, you know, I don't know, but thousands of others who are doing it, and they say, hey, this isn't fair, which they probably have got good grounds to say it isn't fair, if that's the case?
You'll, you'll see that we've attached the legal opinion.
Yes, I read that. And I've had calls as well and people are saying we're open to a legal challenge if we, if we charge some and not others. Is that, I'm just wondering, is that something, what is this, what is, does anyone know?
We, we are aware of the various legal challenges in the regulatory environment and the paper alludes to some of the things that we would need to look at.
Right. So is that a yes or no?
That's the answer it was. We need, we're in a public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I want to say, we've exhausted questions, but it's probably not the only thing we've exhausted. We've got a mover in councillor Benson Pope for the recommendations per the order paper. That's fine. Is there a seconder? Seconding councillor O'Malley, would you like to speak to it, sir?
And I think people should remember, I encourage councillors to remember why we're here. And we're here because we have had a lobby to the council from the commercial sector, and a lot of councillors around the table have been talking about how much they love the commercial sector. From the commercial sector asking us to do something about people who are in their business and being rated differently. And you can see from the table in the report that it's not just the motteleas, it's the hotel industry and it's also the Airbnb industry. And I don't think there can be any doubt that something needs to be done about people who are professional, commercial BNB operators. I agree that we need to be perhaps more nuanced about the definition, so that people who are genuine homeowner, live in the home, having the odd person here and there, or even on a regular basis, aren't captured by whatever we might do. But I can answer part of councillor O'Malley's question about what if you are just an operator, because I was surprised that a recent property purchase in Belmont Lane, I hasten to add, for those of you who know where Belmont Lane is, just for the purpose of Airbnb, did trigger a resource consent for, because of the change of use. So this is happening already and it's a judgment made by planning staff. So some of these issues are being captured, but the issue of the rating imposed that should be approached, needs to be addressed. And I don't think there should be any doubt that this is one of the factors that is causing, or at least making our significant accommodation short, housing shortage worse. During the submissions on the second generation plan, that fine plan that you all approved, there were discussions about Queenstown. And apparently there are over 2,000 Airbnb or book a batch or equivalent houses in Queenstown, which therefore, of course, are removed from the local housing market available for workers in Queenstown. So don't be surprised, there's a bigger problem in Queenstown than we have. And similarly, the issue of capital value, or the lack of capital gains tax, is a factor in all of this. And I think like most issues and macro issues in the economy, there is never just one simple cause. But I think we're here as a bit of a perfect storm in terms of the effects of a new idea, actually, which people have taken to like ducks to the water. I, I would like to see us address it sooner rather than later, but given the motion about the examination of differentials, I'm supportive of the staff suggestion that we do it at the same time. That's logical. And it also makes sense to do it, to give us the opportunity, the extra time, as part of the long-term plan, so that we can refine the issues around just who gets captured and who doesn't, and that people have less to get aggravated about during the annual plan hearings in the first instance, but knowing that this will be coming up as a discussion when we move on to the 10-year plan subsequently.
Thank you. councillor O'Malley.
Thank you, worship. Just remember that the BNB and Airbnb stands for when we're talking about are these, are these potential commercial activities. And I do want to reiterate, as councillor Benson Pope said, this is not about us getting more revenue and it's about basically the commercial sector saying they want an even playing field. And we are listening to the commercial sector in that regard. In terms of the cutoff of 28 days or 28 nights, we're not trying to find someone who rents out for 29 days and leaves it empty. We've got to come up with some point at which we say this looks like it's acting as a commercial activity. So we come up with an arbitrary number, which seems to reflect, if you went away on vacation and put your house up for rent, you're unlikely to broach that. But if you're using it to get income, you're quite likely to be well above it. That's really what it comes down to. 300, 200, 300 houses, is that a big impact? Well, according to those who want more greenfield development, that is a big impact. So, you know, it is against 47,000 houses or whatever, but take 200 to 300 houses out of the rental market and you will cause immense increases in the rental prices. So even though that number may appear small to some people looking at it quickly, I think that's actually a very significant number. And I want to reiterate, don't let our worry about potential outliers stop us moving forward. We've, this has been put in front of us for quite some time and our concern that we can only describe 95% of our environment and worrying about the 5% we can't describe, has caused us to not do anything for a whole 12 months. I agree with the idea that now that we are where we are and we're doing this other work, let's bundle the work together. But let's make sure we move forward on this, please.
For the speakers, councillor Gary.
I'm supportive of the motion and I think the extra time will help us to be much more precise. I do think having a level, level playing field is important, but particularly, and I know this from my own experience anecdotally, that it is most definitely taking houses out of the rental market. And it is also taking opportunities out for homestay families. So those two things are important, our education sector, and we know that there's a stress on rentals in the, in the city. From that perspective alone, this is worthy of consideration. I think the most important thing is how we communicate what we're deciding today, because there are people in our community who are very stressed about this, thinking we are making a decision about the what, where and how today, and we're not. There is time and we need to get it right. And I congratulate the staff on their thoroughness in terms of the complexities, the legal ramifications. It's not a simple matter, but I do believe that we will and can get this correct. And we need to communicate very clearly what we're about to our community.
councillor Reddick.
Yes, I think it's worthwhile doing to get into that discussion and have it about, even though it's, all the evidence suggests it's not worthwhile doing. But it does at least put something there in place and the, as our methods, methodology for assessing who's doing what and, you know, how many visitors are staying in the, in various accommodations improve over time, then we may be able to gather more and more, you know, appropriate amounts of revenue from them. Because it's one of the things, we have all these visitors coming to town, it's, it would be good to have them help out with the rates on their way through.
Councillor Benson Pope, you're right of reply. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against? That's agreed. Nearly there. Item seven. Funding options, subsidised bus fares in Dunedin. Team Finance. Any comments you want to make?
I want to make one comment, if I may, please. On page fifty, in the summary of considerations, near the bottom, there's a heading, financial considerations. That should actually say a potential cost for subsidised fares as opposed to the cost estimate. That's a potential at this stage, yeah.
That's fine. Thank you. Questions, councillors? It being councillor Barker.
I just want to ask, obviously, we would think about, sorry, putting money aside or looking after subsidising the bus fares. I wonder if there'd been any money put in the budget for actually promoting the use of the buses and where that would come from? In order to make this succeed, it would need that promotion.
So, so we don't tend to do that because it's not our responsibility to provide, although the council, the regional council does in fact promote buses themselves. I would imagine if you were to take this move, it would attract some publicity and it would become known that, that we were doing this. There is a paper to come back to you in May about just how much the fares, what the options are. Do you have a flat rate across the whole city? Do you have a zone for the city and a separate zone for the outer regions, for example? And that will also then receive its own publicity in, in May.
councillor Lord.
I was just going to say, even though I didn't agree to this last week, I would move option one if I had a choice. If you want me to move option one. I think that's the correct way to go.
We've got a second, we've got questions still to come potentially. councillor Reddick.
So, we seem to be, this council seems to be very good at increasing costs and rates and so forth, but there's an option here, option to reduce other budgets. So would it be feasible for us simply to say, yes, let's put this 600k subsidy there and we'll leave it to the chief to sort out what other budgets could be reduced to pay for it?
You could. I, I think one of the things to consider is, one of the reasons this is down as possibility to do orders unbudgeted expenditure is that we have got, we don't know how much it will cost. So you can make a decision to have a flat fee of a dollar or a flat fee of $2. Because that's likely to change customer behaviour, that if your customer base went up enough, then the amount that NZTA pays towards the regional council means that it might not actually cost us anything at all. So that's why there's a suggestion here that we put it in. Effectively, this is the version we talked about at the meeting, it's contingent liability.
Yes.
If it ends up costing something, we would look to transfer. And certainly, as the year rolls on and we tell you what the actual cost is, you could, you could quite comfortably say, we, we, we always live within a surplus anyway. We, we don't run the year to run at a loss. So we would be looking at ways of balancing the books as the year went on regardless. So that would be an automatic assumption that we would be looking to do that without necessarily going in and finding lines to cut. We would be looking to still run at a surplus during the course of the year, yes.
Yeah, so option one is just what I suggested, except you'd only do it as required.
Effectively, that is exactly right.
Yeah, great. Councillor O'Malley.
Have any idea how many of the people who ride the bus are ratepayers? Would you assume that most of them are?
Or renters who therefore are also ratepayers.
Therefore, basically, what I'm really getting at is, would it be a fair to say then that if we were to ever incur costs at the level of the council, but reduced bus fares, it would also be ratepayers that would be benefiting as well as ratepayers that are paying? Anyway, that's more of a comment than a question. The real question now, though, is, because we're leaving this as an unbridge expenditure, is that because we have yet to talk to NZTA about the, and the ORC about the real, the real cost that we're facing and the real ways in which this would play itself out?
As I said, when I introduced this, it's a potential expenditure.
And that's why we're calling it potential, because there's still quite a lot to be-
Too many unknowns to know what, it might have cost anything, as the CEO said, yeah.
We, we have talked to them and they, they all know this is coming and we talked to them about-
Oh, well, I know, we've sort of said like, hello, how you're doing, but we haven't really-
No, no, I mean, we've told them we're planning to do this. We've told them there's a report coming in May that talks about the potential zoning. All of us are unclear about, the actual costs completely and utterly dependent upon the take-up.
And what will they do about fare box recovery and other things and how does this fit into all the other objectives? So I think there's quite a lot to flesh out here still.
I would caution people against the assumption that all bus users are ratepayers, either directly or indirectly, as anybody in the port chalmers run at this time of the year will be aware. I mean, there are plenty of visitors who use our public transport services. Yeah, fine. councillor Houlihan.
Uh, councillor Houlihan.
Would it be, what percentage would, I mean, I, I think, um, would it be fair to say that our chances of, you know, more people using the bus if we go down to two dollars, that it would, we've got a very good chance of not having to pay anything anyway because of the increased use?
I, I think I would be loath to be that definitive.
Right.
Um, uh, we know that Queenstown effectively did this uh, and they ended up not having to pay anything, but partly the reason for that, we understand partly, visitor, I mean, user numbers went up, but also they changed a number of things at the same time and it was hard to know what proportion of that was attributable to this move. For us, we're in a better position that the bus hub is done, the routes are simplified, the timing is simplified, there's a better timetable. The main thing we'll be looking to change as far as we're aware is this. So it will be an interesting case study. I heard a suggestion that this amount of money would probably give you somewhere in the eight to ten percent ridership increase, but that was a suggestion. Um, uh, that would certainly help with not having to use up this amount of money, but because you'd be getting more from the NZTA. We're better to tell you as the year rolls by and to actually come to you with real numbers than to guess.
Okay, in the, um, if we did opt for option one, in the, what, you know, in the worst scenario that we had to pay some of this money, um, what, what sort of things might we have to cut if we had to or, or reduce?
Look, mostly during the course of the year, um, most years, uh, we have things that we don't deliver. We have, um, additional funding that we get from here and there. We have interest rate divergences from what we thought it was going to be. Mostly, we work quite hard towards the end of the year to be running it pretty close to a surplus and we just make adjustments and tweaks. We might put something off a bit. So I think you could be pretty confident we won't be cutting any levels of service in order to get you here. We'll manage that, this amount of money.
That's great, thank you.
Councillor Alder.
I, I support option one, but I do have a question, um, sort of a bit around our partnership model. And are we looking at, um, cost sharing, say, and pushing for cost sharing, say, with the regional council? Or even potentially the university and polytech helping out with their students and staff to lower their carbon footprint or what? Or lobbying central government to say that in fact, um, the lot, if they subsidise the buses more, then it would lower the ca- carbon footprint of travel. So what are we doing in those other spaces to help bring those prices down as well? In, in that sense of cost sharing?
So this is already cost sharing and that at the moment, we're the only people that don't pay a portion. So this would be the only portion we pick up. So the ORC already rates. They rate it as a targeted rate for people who live within a certain number of metres of bus stops. Um, so basically if you're directly able to use the bus, for us, this cost would be spread more generally across the whole ratepayer base. Um, there's some sense in that and because people on the buses mean that everyone else gets slightly less congestion, it's a little bit easier to get a park. So, so for us, the funding would be spread a bit more widely. The government would automatically pick up a share because they will pay the increased fare box recovery for the increased patronage. So in that sense, for cost sharing, doing this, if bus, if ridership goes up, government automatically picks up an increased share.
I just hear that, but, um, the central government is looking at a higher subsidy maybe for community service card users? That was potentially a, a thing that was coming up.
Further questions? Councillor Riddick.
Uh, could, instead of having a bed tax on all visitors, could we have a bus tax? Rated on the beds.
No. Questions? No, it's been moved councillor Lord, seconded councillor Houlihan, would you like to speak to it, councillor?
Oh, well, actually, the chief gave a pretty good example of my answer, of what I would have said before anyway, which was like, I, without, um, cutting your extravagant, uh, I heard councillor Vandervist talking about your extravagant wage bill. I'm sure there is places where we can make savings. The, the main reason why I'm pushing this option is because it may well not amount to six hundred thousand dollars. And if it's only fifty thousand or only a hundred thousand, I'm sure we can cope with it. What we can't do is rate for six hundred thousand dollars is something that we don't supply. So once we get a bit of an idea, um, that's a better way of going about it. And it will make a significant, well, it might push rates to six point nine percent, so I don't think we want to go there. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor O'Malley.
Just, you know, my, my, from what I remember, I think the NZTA co-fund is around about four million and, and their fare box recovery is around about fifty percent, which means that we're collecting about four million a year in fee, in, in fares. Some of our fares are two dollars fifty, some of our fares are four dollars fifty. I reckon back at the envelope, we're probably exposing ourselves to about a million dollars if nothing happened. There's no way nothing's going to happen. And so so long as we get, you know, five hundred thousand dollars worth of, um, fare box recovery, we'll get a five hundred thousand dollar match from the government and then that's when we'll break even. So I think the six hundred thousand dollar number is something, we pulled it from the Queenstown ear. We put it out there because it's a, it's, because we're saying we're going to be exposed to something and we think that probably if it all goes well, we're probably not paying nothing. But we don't know till we've done it. That's really what it comes down to.
Thank you. Councillor Houlihan.
I, I would really like to applaud staff and I think here probably particularly our, um, CEO. I think this is an absolutely brilliant, um, motion and it solves a lot of problems and it's great. I mean, I had an issue, as you all know, with voting in favour of it before because I didn't want to see rates increase. But also mainly I had an issue with the payment. I thought ORC should be paying for the buses. However, this is a brilliant option. It costs us nothing, um, hopefully, because people will pick it up. And, um, you know, there will be a little bit of a cost, but not as much. It does, doesn't increase our rates. And what an amazing thing, if we can offer a flat rate of two dollar bus fares. That's brilliant and I hope, you know, this gets into action as soon as possible because I want to see a lot more people using the buses. Thank you, if they're regular.
Councillor Gary.
How to follow that? Um, in the outlying areas of Dunedin, I live in one of those, um, the cost of people using buses is really expensive. And, um, particularly if you take a family and they catch the school bus. School bus concession cards are expensive and if you have several kids in the family, uh, it's much cheaper to take the car. And we've been for, uh, uh, some time, uh, talking about trying to get people out of their cars. We've got a, a carbon zero target for twenty thirty. Um, and the one thing that came through the recent election campaign, this was the one issue that people agreed on, was wanting a better bus service in terms of affordability. I have absolutely no doubt, uh, in terms of the community that I live in and have represented, um, in previous roles, that, uh, cheaper bus fares, um, will make a heck of a difference, will be the trigger to get people out of their cars. And it's particularly attractive in a time when we have a lot of roadworks. On the Portobello Road, we have a lot of roadworks and we're very thrilled to see them. We in fact embrace them, uh, because we waited a long time. But, um, in town, people have complained about the number of, of, uh, roadworks we have. Well, this solves the problem. We get the cars off the road and the congestion they complain about. We get the cars, uh, some of the cars off the road, get the people out of their cars that can. There are some that can't, that is for sure. But this gives people a choice. Um, and so I applaud staff for their work on this. Uh, I wasn't part of the discussion in the annual plan, but I was utterly delighted to see this uh, in the papers for today. So I will certainly be supporting this and look forward to it coming to fruition.
Councillor Lord, your right of reply?
Uh, I will just say in response to Carmen, our councillor Houlihan, that there's no such thing as a free bus. If we spend six hundred thousand, it will cost somebody six hundred thousand. It's just where we take it from. And in response, uh, um, and in the comment of councillor Benson Pope, who's often want to say, I don't see why any sensible person would vote against this.
And on that benevolent note, uh, I'll put out all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Thanks, everyone.